I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, Monday, August 12th. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Commissioner Perez being absent. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here this morning. If you all would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Any public comments?
There's none, Your Honor.
We do have the minutes.
We're going to make a correction to item number eight. The motion should be prepared by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Perez. To a final approval, certified by State Department. That will be no correction.
Okay. On the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
I also want to approve with the correction.
I second.
Moved in second to approve with corrections, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the vendors list.
I do the move, Your Honor. Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And next item is the claims.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, is there anyone from out of town that needs to come before the court at this time? What item?
Eight and nine.
Okay, if it's okay, I'll move to item eight. And this is a presentation, introduction for Better Living for Texas. This is through the Act Live extension.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I appreciate Omar putting this item on the agenda for us. What we wanted to do was just introduce you to a couple of staff members that have started with our office here recently. Well, not so recent in the case of Heidi, pero porcita. She started, I think, seven years ago, and we're finally getting around to introducing you all to her. But hopefully, you all know her well by now. But Lisa Gonzalez is a recent hire. It is a new position that we brought to Starr County. And this is all through our contract with the Department of State Health Services. And so, the full price of, the full cost of her salary, benefits, travel, everything is provided through that contract that Texas A&amp;M AgriLife has with them. And we're really excited to have both of them here. Starr County is an important county in our district and a very productive county that enjoys a really good reputation in our district and in the state. So, we want to keep that tradition going. Lisa was, is, I guess, a native of Roma. At least, that's what her resume says. And she worked for STC for the last 14, 15 years, working her way up from a position with special programs into helping students with financial aid. And then, most recently, working with the dual pathways for students that are trying to move from high school into higher education. So, she was very familiar with our program. She was a past participant and graduate as well. So, she was very familiar with what we did. And that's the kind of excitement that we like to have, and we're really glad to have her. She started, I believe, April 1st, and so, I wanted to give her a chance to share a little bit about what she's been doing. And I don't want Heidi to just sit here and wonder when her turn comes up. So, I'll just introduce her real quick as well. But Heidi's been here for several years, and I just thought, since we were coming, we might as well bring her to you all as well and formally give you a chance to welcome her, although she's been here for quite some time already. But Heidi worked in our Hidalgo County office for several years. So, she's been with Extension for working in the whole gardening area for a long, long time. Before I ask Lisa to introduce herself to you, we put one of these handouts in front of you. It's a two-pager. One is on the BLT youth programs, and the other is on the adult side of the programs. Both of them have a nutrition component which tries to get people to make better decisions about their health by, through nutrition, choosing what they eat. And as my doctor said, if it tastes good, spit it out, right? But there's things, there's ways that you can teach and coach people into making things that do taste good and are also good for you. So, there's a nutrition component. There's also a gardening component. And the idea there, we were talking to the Commissioner a little while ago as well, is to help people grow their own. And that brings them closer to the food source and hopefully takes them away from the drive-throughs, the drive-through food at least a couple of times a week and helps them make better food choices. And the last part is physical activity, the Walk Across Texas, a lot of the programs that you all probably already heard about. So, there's components for all of that, for all those three, in both the youth and the adult program. And we're going to rely on them to really move those programs forward here in Starr County with your support. We don't want, we don't want, even though they're not paid out of county funds, they are part of the county office, they are part of county government, and we want you all to know who they are and what they're doing. And we want them reporting to you, we want you asking questions, we want you to know what they're doing and giving us guidance and feedback when we, you know, from time to time, as, you know, as they report to you on what they're doing. Because we want you all to be both knowledgeable about what they're doing and also supportive and happy with what they're doing. So, Lisa?
Good morning. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for welcoming us. And I am looking forward, I'm really looking forward to giving back to my community. Like Dr. Salinas says, I worked many years at the college. Also, before that, I worked at the Roma ISD. So, I'm very familiar with both communities, Roma and Rio Grande, and that has been an A-plus for me as I've been marketing, I've been visiting different areas. I have been, they've recognized me, so right away, it's like they're opening the doors currently, together with my coworker Heidi. We've been doing classes at La Casita, and so, they enjoy it. We have like 30 participants, right? So, I myself come in and give the nutrition part, and then Heidi talks about the gardening. So, I think it's the other way around. She talks about the gardening, and whatever they grow, I'm telling them how they could cook it. And so, I've been cooking for them, I've been showing them, giving them una probadita, like they say. Like Dr. Salinas says, sometimes when you taste something, you want to spit it out because it's good. But then, but then again, when you're there and explaining to them, and it's something very inexpensive, and in La Casita, something that caught my attention was about they're giving out frozen strawberries. So, one of the first recipes, I did something with frozen strawberries. So, they're excited. So, I'm looking forward, and like if you all want anything else for me to do, like in your presence, please reach out and let me know. As you, as Dr. Salinas said, you have the pamphlet in front of you. Those are the classes that we offer, together with Heidi and my team players there, also with Nada. We have a lot of goals, we have a lot of work to do, and I'm excited because I'm part of the group now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could go on and on.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I've been working here for some time now with nutrition programs and community gardens. Just like to express my gratitude for being presented before the court. Thank you so much for everything that, for your support on our gardening programs. And if you ever need anything, please reach out to me, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, if you all have any questions, we're happy to answer them, but I know you all got a full agenda.
Just wanted to thank you all for the work that you all do here in the county and certainly welcome to your new role. And, you know, you did mention something that I feel is important to us and certainly we'd like to see. If you all could report to us, maybe not every month, but maybe every three months or so, just to tell us, you know, how you all are doing, what's happening, you know, in case we get questioned, we have something to answer. So, if that could happen, that'd be appreciated.
Sure. We'll make sure that happens. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all so much.
Okay.
The next one, that's item eight. Item nine is a presentation by Dr. Julie Bassan on Area Health Education Center.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be before you again. I want to say, on behalf of the Area Health Education Center of the Rio Grande border, we are so happy and appreciative of being in your community. And with me today, I have two powerful team members, Ms. Vicky Morales and Ms. Anel Torres. They are part of a team that is working hard every day to support not just our counties, which include Webb, Zapata, Jim Hug, but also Starr County and beyond. And I just want to bring you back a little bit of information. Over two years ago, we came before you and introduced ourselves and said, "We are here to work with your community, to enhance what's already happening, and maybe to schedule new activities that are needed in your community." Activities like trainings for teachers, for students, services for community members. And we've been so blessed to know and work closely with Ms. Fuentes, who's opened many doors, but also people at the school districts in the city of Roma and La Grulla, different areas that have been very instrumental in us really making a difference in your community. We had over 36 individual events in your community of Starr County, and not just in Rio Grande, but the surrounding areas as well. At these events, we provided health services, also educational services. And that's where we made contact with teachers and educators and other community leaders that needed to know that Starr County elected officials are very concerned about their citizens, and this is why we're here, to link what you already have to them and make them aware that you continue to develop these services. And so, at the end of that session, which was two years, in May, one of the deliverables that we had out of that grant that the Texas Department of State Health Services Office of Board of Public Health, one of the deliverables is the creation and development of the 2024 Starr County Healthcare and Services Directory. And we have a copy for each one of you, and we'll leave some extra ones with your staff. What's important about this health services directory is that it is in English and Spanish, and it also has a QR code, which means that the directory will always be accessible to everyone that has it. This directory gives people the information as to where to find health services, where to look for food, where to reach out for support in paying their bills. And so, we're very proud to present this to you, Judge. This will be a living document because we will never finish. As the agencies in your community continue to develop and grow, and even your office continues to develop programs and projects that impact your community members, this directory will increase by the number of pages it has. And we at the Area Health Education Center, Judge, commit ourselves to continuing to update it as needed. So, we humbly present this to you on behalf of the Area Health Education Center. And we also welcome feedback from you. If you would like for us to add a page or whatever it is that you like, we're here to support you. So, this is yours, this belongs to the county. And we will leave some with Ms. Fuentes. Now, one of the things that we did, I told you that over 36 individual events we did, and that was just health fairs or health events in the community. That's not including the number of trainings we did in the schools, the number of trainings we did for students, for teachers. We also went ahead and did something to invite the residents of Starr County to tell us. We had just finished going through the hardcore COVID, where everybody was on lockdown, and we were barely coming out of that session that we hoped never to look back again. One of the questions that we were asked by the Texas Department of State Health Services Office of Board of Public Health, "How can we better prepare our counties for an emergency, for another pandemic?" We hope that will never happen. So, what we did at the Area Health Education Center, we developed a survey, and we went and asked people from all of your communities. And we're talking not just Rio Grande, we're talking Roma, we're talking, I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses, La Grulla, San Isidro, all of the areas nearby. And we asked people questions. And so, what you have before you is the Starr County residents' recommendations as to how to better prepare for medical emergencies. As you see, your population is 65,920, 98% Hispanics. And the three questions that we based ourselves on was to the right, is how to prepare for medical emergencies, right? Thank you so much, Vicky. 31% of the people that we surveyed said, "Continue to do promote prevention methods" because not everybody's aware of them. And 18% said, "We need more vaccines education." And 18% said, "It also, the responsibility relies on the person himself, him or herself, because they need to take responsibility of self-care and taking care of their health." The next question was, "How to increase vaccination rates?" 31% of your residents said, "Educational campaigns. We need more education about whatever vaccine is coming up or whatever new health service to prevent an illness or a disease." 17% said, "Community health services." That means having these vaccines available or services at a place and time where people can come together, where they don't have to just set up a schedule with the doctor's office or the clinic, but a place where they can come together and receive them. 14% said, "Awareness and public information campaign. Continue to say the message in English and Spanish on the radio, in different meetings, in different gatherings, at parent events, and how to access credible data for informed decisions." Why is this question important? Because we know that a lot of our agencies, the Center for Decision Control, the Texas Department of State Health Services, has a website, just like you and I. But not many people know that there's that available. So, we asked them, "How can we help you access the data?" And 32% said, "Educational campaign. We need to tell them that this data is available." Not only that, but how to access it. And 15% said, "Even if you just put a flyer in social media that's coming from the judge's office, or the AHIC, or somebody that we know is a credible source, people are on their social media all the time." And 11% said, "News and marketing." And that means PSAs, a billboard, or if you have an area outside your office that you can put a banner, that would remind people that these services are available. Again, this is also available through this QR code in the Social Services Directory. If you scan this code, it'll take you directly to that directory that you have in your hands. Judge and Commissioners, none of this would have been possible without the support of your first leadership, that you opened your arms to us, to coming into your community over two years ago, but also residents that live here, that care about your community, that are so passionate about it that they are contagious, and this is why we stand here before you. The grant ended in April, and we're still here. On top of that, Judge and Commissioners, we have a Starr County Health Coalition that meets every month, and we've been meeting since we started. We started virtual, and as COVID went away almost completely, we come to your community and we meet. Today, we have a meeting at 12 noon. Thanks to Ms. Fuentes, it's always available and willing to help us find a location. So, our efforts of education, providing information, linking people to resources will continue. We're not going to leave your community because we believe that your community is our community now. So, we thank you for that, and I want to invite the staff to see if they just want to say something brief. Vicky and Anel?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. It has been a great privilege to serve your community, our community now, because we feel that it's home every time we arrive here. Through, I know Dr. Bassan mentioned that our grant did end in April, but we're still here, and I'm very proud to say that we were able to bring more resources to the community. This past April, we were able to graduate four of your community members for their community health workers. Now, they completed the training in April, and in July, they got certified by the State of Texas. So, now, you have four more community health workers in your community, that we hope that eventually they'll bring more education to your community. And once we're done, hopefully never, that they're able to continue and educate other people in your own community. So, thank you so much.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Anel Torres, and I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for AHIC. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for opening the doors and your welcoming community. We work really well with our, in collaboration with a lot of the agencies that are in your county, and most of all, the impact and the relationships that we've built with your families in the communities. So, we appreciate the welcoming and the support that you have from your staff and the agencies in your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anel. And just a brief note, you know, Vicky mentioned the community health workers. Everything that we provide, Judge and Commissioners, is at no cost to your residents. So, these community health workers receive not just free training and certification, they received a grant to help them with whatever expenses they had, if they needed to have internet, et cetera. So, we will continue to do the same as long as you continue to have these doors open for us. Any questions?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you all for the work that you do and continue to do in our community and for the people of Starr County. You know, on some of this, your survey that you did, for example, promoting prevention methods and stuff like that, will, I guess, will you all be available to help Ms. Fuentes or whoever to ensure that we meet these goals?
Of course, of course. And we have more detailed data. So, whoever would like to sit with us and ask more questions, we'd be more than happy to provide and even to develop prevention methods or programs with you.
Yeah, maybe putting bullets out there every so often, you know, letting people know what's available or what's coming or, you know.
There's a lot of work that we can do together, but yes, yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, because we do need the help.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Again, thank you all so much.
Definitely.
Thank you. Have a good day. Anyone else that needs to come before the court? If not, we'll continue with our agenda. Texas, Ms. Salinas?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. You have my report in front of you? Yes, okay. This is my report for July the 2024, just for Starr County. Just for Starr County, we're 329,256 with 53 cents collections. The total delinquent collection same time last year were 315,581 with 77 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of 13,674 with 76 cents, more than last year. Since 2023, taxes became delinquent as of July the 1st, projected collections remaining at 102%. Also, we collected 67% of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are 1,117,256 with 90 cents. Also, the motor vehicle collections for the month was 36,586 with 27 cents. Delinquent collections for INS collections just for the month is 11,603 with 66 cents. Year-to-date for the INS collection is 1,022,22,949 with 65 cents. This concludes my report. If you have a question?
Any questions on the collections?
Thank you.
County Clerk, Mr. Roncetis?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Our report should be in front of you. I'm just going to kind of highlight a couple of them. Our records management collected for the month of July, 5,612. We collected 1,0492,30 in copies. Our records archive fee collected 5,041. And we collected for the County Clerk's Office, 16,50890. Total due to the treasure that was paid out for the month of July was 30,478 with 30 cents. Pretty consistent, Judge. We've been, Commissioners, we've been pretty consistent every month. So, I didn't see, I thought we'd see a downtake for the summer months, but it's been pretty consistent. Any questions? Thank you.
Sheriff, your pardon?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is revenue report for the month of July 2024. We show AUSA Solutions at 1,500, Marshal Transport Services 9,713, Marshal Medical Services 3,178, Housing of U.S. Marshals 190,00134, Hidalgo County at 216,876 dollars, for revenue of 421 with $401. The count for August the 5th was 95 Federals, 104 Hidalgo, and 84 Starr County inmates for a total house of 283. The average was 97 federal inmates and 113 Hidalgo inmates. We show an increase from July 2023 to 2024 of $64,774. And the year totals is 4,124, $418, and this is a 97.5% collected so far. That's my report, Your Honor.
It looks real good, you know.
Thank you.
If the last two months remain about the same, we should end up with about 3/4 of a million over budget.
We're shifting, Hidalgo has lowered the numbers a bit with the Willesse jail, but we are increasing the marshal at the same time as Hidalgo's moving out, we're bringing in more federal inmates at the same time.
Hopefully, it'll remain about the same.
It'll be a little higher, the marshal.
Does it pay more than?
Yes, sir. I believe it's $3 more. It makes a little difference on there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. International Bridge?
Good morning. This is the report for July 2024. The total revenue from traffic collected was 227,778 dollars, and we show an increase of $26,654 for the month of July 2023 compared to the month of July 2024. And we show also an increase of $7,117.50 on collections for the month of July 2024. on collections for the month of July 2024 compared to the month of June 2024. And the grand total collection for the month of July was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
This includes the, the increase that we talked about the last time?
Yes, it's because summer, it's always really slow. So, I'm hoping that for August, it's going to go more.
It's, I mean, that's still a very good number.
Yeah, we're still in the, not in the red.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Attorney, Mr. Montalvo.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners. This is my report for the month of July 2024. If you just follow along with me, the ending balance for the general fund is at four million seven hundred and fifty-five thousand seven seventeen with thirty-six cents. The balance for the road and bridge is at two hundred and twenty-six thousand seven fifteen with eighty-seven cents. The enterprise funds, the ending balance is at one million seven sixty-eight, three ninety-two with eighty-seven cents. The drainage district, the ending balance for that one is at three million nine fifty-nine, four hundred and sixty-eight with twenty-two cents. And the INS funds, the ending balance is at two million seven twenty-eight, four fifty with three cents, which brings the ending balances of all, of all funds to thirteen million four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven forty-four with thirty-five cents. That's my report, Your Honor.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. The one question, this, this, and I know you've told us before, but I forget. Does not include the ARPA funds, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so that's an additional.
Three million eight hundred.
Should be about seventeen million. Auditor? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table the auditor's report for this meeting. Moved in second. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Moving on to item eleven. Ten, I'm sorry. This is to approve workforce solution employment agreement with Starr County tax office. And this is, the workforce now has, I guess, some of their clients that are looking for jobs, and, and they call the county, specifically Ms. Salinas. And what they do, they, they will send, and they will pay for six months of the salary. So, it's a way of getting help and also to try out these people and see how they work out. I think it's a good thing, but we need a word pool. Moved in second. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eleven is reappointment of Dr. Jessica Vera to the Border Region MHMR Center in, in Laredo. Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. And motion carries. And just for, for your information, I, I submitted a letter to the director of, of the state asking that we be reassigned from Laredo to, to the valley. I feel that we're not getting the service that we should from Laredo. We've had several confrontations with them, and they still, you know, we're still not getting the service that I feel we, we deserve. And, and then the other thing is, if you all recall, many years ago, we were with Workforce Solutions in Laredo. And, and not to speak bad about Laredo, I mean, they've been good neighbors, but our people have nothing in common with Webb County. They have more things in common with Hidalgo. So, when we were with Webb, our unemployment was around thirty-three percent unemployment. So, we chose to move to Hidalgo, the court at that time. And by doing that, now we're at single-digit, I think, last unemployment, we're eight percent. Because our people don't mind going to work in, in the valley. They didn't want to go work in Laredo. And I feel that's what's happening with Border Region. Our people don't want to go all the way to Laredo to go see their loved ones, or even worse, San Antonio. They'd rather go here to McAllen or Arlington, I guess it's as far as. So, that, that's the reason I, I sent that, I carboned Senator Saffarini and Representative Guillen with that letter and, and see what they, how they respond. Well, the, the state has to approve, because, because they're the ones that assign to what region we belong. But I, I think we'll be a lot better off if we move to the valley. But we'll, we'll see what happens. But if you all see Ryan or Judy, make sure you put a bug in their ear. We would like to have that. Any, okay. Moving on to item twelve. This is an action item, and it's to approve a permit from Frontier. You know, if, if I, you know, I'm, I'm going to ask that we table all these permits from Frontier. You know, we're, we're exploring the possibility of, of a fee. It is my understanding that everywhere else, there's a fee, and we used to have a fee. And for some reason, you know, for some reason, it just got dropped. The court has never approved the dropping of that fee. But if we could, maybe table it to our next meeting, and by then, we should have a, an answer. I'm sorry?
All the permits.
All the permits. Moved in second. This would be from, from item.
Twelve to eighteen.
Twelve to eighteen. Okay, is the motion for that, twelve to eighteen?
A motion.
Okay, second. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Item nineteen is.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-three?
No.
Nineteen has been named in a street.
Yeah, it's a.
It's a street?
To approve an unknown name street to the Domingo.
I don't know who put it down, or they.
You want to table it?
It's on, it's on Montalvo Street. I don't know. If I'm not mistaken, I probably know what it is.
If you're not sure, we can table it for our next meeting.
Okay, let's table it for now.
Okay, is that a motion?
I don't know.
Moved in second to table item nineteen. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items, I guess, twenty through twenty-three are all related.
I don't know, we, we deny all the requests from items twenty to twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in second to deny items twenty through twenty-three. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-four is a action item, and this is to establish fiscal year twenty-five with legal services for annual review contract for CBP. Oh, CPS. Mr. Montalvo? Is that a, a grant? Moved in second. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-five is approval of a resolution in support of local border security program for surveillance cameras. It's a grant for the search department. Moved in second. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items twenty-six through. Through forty-seven are budget amendments. Moved in second to approve. Items twenty-six through forty-seven. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty-eight is a budget correction. Moved in second. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And item forty-eight. Is, did I skip anyone, or did I leave anyone out? If not, it is ten forty-five. And pursuant to section five five one point oh seven four, we will now move into executive session to discuss. Thirty, and we're back in, in open session. We only had one item in executive session.
Motion to approve that discussion in executive session, Your Honor? Second.
Motion to approve over salaries is discussed. Second, Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Move in second to adjourn. Honitor, please, aye. Motion carries.